Good evening and welcome to the sixteenth meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland on Monday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four. I will call this meeting to order at six P M. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson? Councilman Mills?
Here.
Councilman Simmons?
Here.
President Cole?
Here.
Mayor Sidmore?
Here.
Yawakor, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Agenda item number three is report of the Mayor and City Council. We'll start this evening with Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. This summer, we had a great time in the city of Laurel. During the month of August, I had the pleasure and the opportunity to spend time having coffee chats with residents, H O A members, and leaders, as well as business leaders and owners, and a few fraternal organizations as well, to see how we can support the community, especially our youth. In addition to that, there were so many community field events this summer, such as the Laurel Town Center Summer Concerts, which were well-attended, previous council member Martin Mitchell's Annual Backpack School Bash, which I had the opportunity to chat with residents and businesses, and I C C L Summer Picnic. In addition, I stopped by Laurel High School this summer on a few different occasions to deliver a donation on behalf of the Mayor and City Council, including meeting the cheerleading squad and watching them practice during the summer. It was a very proud moment for Ward Two this weekend. Congratulations to our high school, Laurel High School, on their amazing new field. It's been the absolute talk of the town. And one additional thank you to our Communications Department, in particular Director Natalie Williams. We had the opportunity to chat, and I recommended an opportunity for the council to get to, for the community to get to know the council even more. That was one thing that I really wanted to do even during my time prior to joining the council, and she did an absolute fabulous job along with the team. We now have an update that you can see, including updates from the mayor's office and the council to get to know us and understand what we have been doing and what we are doing. So thank you to them for doing that. That concludes my report. President Cole.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Mills?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Back to School. My report begins August sixth for the forty-first annual National Night Out at the Granville Good Park. Then, on August eleventh, I participated in the, in a Back to School Bash at the Laurel Boys and Girls Club, where we gave out school supplies and over to, school supplies to over two hundred children that day. And on August the twelfth, I sat, let's see, I sat at the, oh, I sat at the My Time with the Mayor at the Partnership Activity Center. Then, on August fifteenth, as me being an ambassador of the composting, composting, we went to compost, we went on a composting tour in Upper Marlboro, and that was great. That was cool. Very good, very knowledgeable event. On August twentieth, I was in Sea Pleasant, which is my hometown, to help council, council member Monica Higgs give out awards to constituents who had the best-looking yards. Then, August twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, I was in Atlanta for the Invest Fest and Invest Fest twenty-four, which I took classes on financial literacy to bring these classes here for the youth. So I want to be, I want to have that a part of the fall fun nights that we're anticipating and put together for, that will be held at either the Petro Center or at the Armory to follow through from the Safe Summer Nights. On August twenty-eighth, I participated in the City Hall at the park at the Greenville, Green, no, I'm sorry, Greenview Drive Pool Complex, where we had a packed house. That, that area, they, they came through, and we also invited them to come through City Hall as well for these meetings. Into September, September seventh, I participated at the Green, at the Vansville Elementary School P T As Back to School Barbecue and School Supplies Giveaway, which was a success. A lot of people came through, a lot of people, and I met a historian, Mr. Briscoe, and that P T A Committee, who did a lot of work to just to get that school in Vansville. And, and on that day, on that same day, I didn't run the marathon, but I did get my walk-on in the St. Mark's Parade. So got a lot of steps in on that day, lost, lost, lost a lot of pounds on that day, lot, lot of calories. I didn't, I didn't mention the farmer's market because I'm always there at the farmer's market on Thursdays. But this is the last, just to make a note, this is the last month for the farmer's market, so if you are a farmer's market participant or haven't made it out, this is the last month, so come on out, try to get as much goods as you possibly can. Lot of great vendors out there, and they actually want to put their coat on, and maybe we can continue during the, the fall months. All right, and Mr. President, that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, first off, happy to share news from my family that we had our new little one in August, so thankfully, all went well. We have a cute little guy and losing a little sleep, but I wanted to thank the mayor, members of council, members of staff, and also members of the community who are very supportive. It's really been a great outpouring that both my, my wife and I really, really enjoy. Also, I had an opportunity to meet with a new pastor for, for St. Mark's on Eighth Street here in Laurel, and was very inspired by his vision of really reaching out and doing good in the community. To me, it was also a great reminder about the sort of core pillar role that our churches in Laurel play in terms of helping everyone and also just providing a great community of support. So thank you, Reverend Smith, for your, for your leadership there, and, and also an encouragement for folks in their church communities as well. In addition, I was able to catch up with the Director of Laurel Advocacy and Referral Services, Shannon, and we had a chance to talk about some of the new programs they have, one of which is sort of mobile, being able to have a vehicle that can actually meet people where that need is, and they're very excited about that new program, and I just want to thank them also for their continued innovation. They've been, you know, a big part of really helping the Laurel community and those in need, and they're continuing to do so. So encourage folks to keep an eye out for ways that you can help Lars. Couple of small things to share on news items. You may have seen that the mayor launched the Thrive Small Business Grant right there after Labor Day. So it's a great new program for small businesses in Laurel. It's ten thousand dollars that can be used towards helping you enhance, improve your business. So if you haven't already, please check that out on the Economic and Community Development's webpage. It's called the Thrive Small Business Grant. And thank you, Mayor, for introducing that program as well. Something else our family did is we got to go to the, to the municipal pool this summer with the grandparents, and that was a lot of fun, and they commented how what a great facility that pool was, and so I thought that was just a great testament to all the work we've done here in the city and the Parks and Rec Program. So thank you for that. Looking forward, just a note for this coming week is September eleventh, two days from now, so I know it's a time just sort of to remember, and you may have seen the city share through some of its social media, Mission Barbecue is doing some pre-s sandwiches for sort of first responders, but also our Laurel Mill Playhouse, which is right here on Main Street, is doing a special production from interviews of those who are there. And so if you haven't already, please check that out and get some tickets. It looks like it's really a good production, so I'll leave it there, Mr. President. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Johnson?
Good evening. Hello, everyone, Council President, Mayor, and other council members and staff. I apologize for being a bit late, but my report will be just a little brief to just share some things. Since our last meeting, I was able to present the Angels Haven with a check for a thousand dollars to support their initiative, which recently included the annual Back to School Supply Drive that was held on August the tenth, as well as support for their domestic violence programs. Just a heads up, they are having an annual Love Yourself Brunch in Light of Domestic Violence Month on December the nineteenth, so that organization is handling, handling that. Just a couple of things, I guess it was over the summer, but National Night Out, guess we probably already mentioned, Safe Summer Nights. And one thing that did stand out to me, on August the fifteenth, we had the compost visit. So we were able to visit the facility and see and learn about the actual process, which I think definitely helped me with the better understanding and how we can share the, what we've learned, what the community thinks is better, and once you see it and know it, to be able to share it. So I do appreciate Ms. Michelle Blair for setting that up and allowing us to do that. On Thursday, August twenty-second, Peace on Batuxin Inc. had their ribbon cutting and grand opening to welcome their first overnight and day retreat guest. Very proud for them for that initiative here in Laurel, having that respite here for the women who are suffering with cancer. On Saturday, August twenty-fourth, the Sales Steel and Infant Loss Support Group had their meet and greets. The I C C L had their summer picnic, and then I actually had a chance to get my hands in and volunteer at Peace on Batuxin. So as they had their guests, I was there to help prepare food for them and see how that experience went with them being in the garden and everything. So that was a very enlightening experience that I was able to take part of. Wednesday, August the twenty-eighth, where we had the City Hall in the park, a great turnout in my neck of the woods. It was great, great to see those people out. We shared a wealth of information from different departments. Residents had great questions. I hope we were able to follow up with those. And they learned a lot about the city and the city staff, department heads and administration. So I wanted to show, say too, that during that one, I think that it was good that we all came out and had a united front, and it showed that, you know, we cared about the neighborhood and their needs and what they had to say. Upcoming, probably already mentioned it, but just wanted to reiterate the September fourth Taste Community and Culture Day. Wanted to thank the Department of Communications for putting out the first edition of the Laurel Living Newsletter, and that gives the city and us an opportunity to share and engage with the community. So those are the things I wanted to share in my report today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we go to the mayor, I will give my report. I wanted to give a thank you to the Hussman Institute for Autism, for their donation of kits for children and adults with autism to be used by the Laurel Police Department during emergency situations. A special thank you to resident Ruth Walls for helping make this connection to the Hussman Institute. To piggyback what others have said, on August twenty-eighth, we did have City Hall in the park. I had some follow-up with some of the residents that came out. Just a reminder, please do your part whenever there is a, at night to lock your cars, make sure you're parking in a well-let area. And if something does happen, please make sure to call Laurel Police Department. If they don't know about it, they don't know that something's happening in your community. With the end of summer recess, the month of September has been busy. September third, we had our first Laurel Pride Committee meeting of the month. On the fifth, I had breakfast with County Council Chairwoman Jolene Ivy. Also, that same day, I had a phone call with Anarundel County Council Vice Chair Julie Hummer from right here in Russet, over in Laurel and Anarundel side. On Friday, the sixth, I attended the National League of Cities Finance Administration and Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting that I serve on. On the sixth, I attended the Laurel High School Athletic Field Ribbon Cutting on behalf of the Mayor and City Council. On Saturday, as everyone mentioned, it was St. Mark's Emancipation Day Celebration in Laurel, including the annual five K. I made sure to make my habitual stop for coffee before completing the race. On Sunday, I attended the Oakland Presbyterian Church Home Again Celebration. Thank you for that invitation. Some upcoming events for the different commissions and committees I serve on. Tomorrow night is a Planning Commission meeting in person at six P M. in the council chambers. This coming Friday night, Friday the thirteenth, is Laurel Pride Drag Bingo at Partnership Hall. Doors open at six thirty, and bingo games will start at seven P M. This is the Pride Committee's last fundraiser before Pride Day in October. Next week, we will have, on the seventeenth, the Historic District Commission meeting at six P M., and that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. August the sixth was, some history happened at Fort Meade Army Base. Commander Anna Gore was the second African American to lead that post. She's the first woman to lead that post in a hundred and seventy years in Garrison Command. So congratulations to Colonel Gore, the major accomplishment. Not going to mention everything everybody mentions, a lot of things already. On August the twelfth, we had a blood drive, the one hundred black men of Prince George County and American Legions and Dr. Levi. We co-sponsored a blood drive there, post two, post sixty. And my time with the mayor on August the twelfth as well. August the fifteenth, the safety sensors on our trucks, the D P W, when the trucks are backing up, they can detect anything, anyone behind them six feet. That way, the trucks automatically stop. The driver's going to hit the brakes, so that's a big safety enhancement we have for the community, for the workers and our community as well. Another successful cop camp, Chief Hammond's Department. August the twenty by ten, a H R meeting with Scottstown Community. A lot of good information there as well. We mentioned Peace on Batuxin Ribbon Cutting, we did that as well. Also, attended a meeting, August twenty-second, with Laurel Lake Community, the vistas, not the vistas, the views apartments. Deputy Chief Blinsky, Captain Petro was there. A lot of good information for the citizens. They would appreciate us coming there as well. We mentioned this before as well, August twenty-fourth, Islamic Community Center. We've been partnership with the Community Center for a while, I C C., especially during the pandemic. There was a great stakeholder helping feed in our community, so we're looking forward to continuing working with the Islamic community as well. August twenty-seven, I met with the County Executive, Howard County, Mr. Ball. Had a very interesting meeting, talking about the multi-service center, how Howard County can be a partner in that as well. Once again, we mentioned this already, the twenty eighth, a big turnout there at Greenville Drive for the community out there. B G E, that we partnership with B G E, and we had our first emergency preparation meeting, leadership meeting. We had Montgomery County attend, Prince George County, Carroll County, and City of Laurel and City of Boyd. That's partnership with B E. It was a pilot program for these emergency managers to work together in case we have something, a serious emergency with B G A involved. So was honored to host that. Like we said, Emancipation Day was this weekend, and that was a very successful. I ran the five K again. Did pretty well. I think Chief Hammond will be very impressed with this right here. Three young men from Laurel High School was just hanging out, and they saw the police by the command station, and they cacked the police to play them three on three basketball. So Officer Hernandez, Officer Robertson, Officer Burnett took the challenge. Unfortunately, Laurel Police Officer lost the game seven to four, but it's good community awareness out there with our police department working on young men in the community. So I appreciate officers doing that, even though it was on duty, but still, they took about fifteen minutes to play a game of basketball with some young men, and those young men probably never forget that. So thank you, Chief Hammond, and your police department continue to engage with our community. Some announcements to make, September the eleventh, we mentioned this already, it's, we know nine eleven. We're doing something at Mission Barbecue. We're also doing something, a physical fitness thing, as you know, I love to stay fit. So we challenging the whole community and the world pretty much to do ninety-one thousand one eleven push-ups. We're going to start at nine eleven A M. and we're going to finish at nine eleven P M. So whatever push-ups you can do, just record that, send it to us, to the email address here. We also will be on station there from twelve to four. Sergeant Parker is also Army veteran, served a couple tours in Iraq. He started this program a couple of years ago. It was about bullying, but we're going to change for nine eleven and honor those individuals who lost their lives and our first responders. And so we'll do something, some physical activity. As you know, we mentioned this already, our multicultural day is September the fourth, from twelve, twelve to three P M. Want to congratulate Director Wims again, Miss mentioned before, for the Laurel Living Magazine, the newsletter that probably come out monthly. As you can see, it's a very well-placed magazine, focused on the Mayor and City Council, so really appreciate you doing that. Some proclamations, I'm not going to read them word by word, but National Preparation Month is September twenty twenty-four. Childhood Council Wellness Month, September twenty twenty-four. The Craig A. Moore Law Multi-Service Center proclamation be done tomorrow, September tenth. Patriots Day, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Hispanic Heritage Month starts September fifteenth, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So we hope to highlight that, multicultural day as well. National Self-Family Day is September sixteen, twenty twenty-four. That concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item number four, appointments. Mayor, would you like to read those into the record?
Misunderstood. Yeah, I've got two appointments. Jimmy Rogers to the Tree Board starting on September ninth, twenty twenty-four, to September ninth, twenty twenty-six. And also Oscar de la Punta, Historic Commission, starting on, excuse me, September ninth, twenty twenty-four, to September ninth, twenty twenty-seven. Our resumes have been submitted to the council, and that's your confirmation to Jimmy Rogers to Tree Board and Oscar de la Punta to Historic District Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll entertain a motion?
A motion that, that they both be nominated.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I had a, a call during that. Was there a motion?
Motion by Mr. Mills and seconded by Mr. Simmons.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
For the Tree Board appointment, I abstain and vote yes for the Historic District Commission appointment.
Okay, and Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
And President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Agenda item number five, general public hearing. Now is the time that we would like to hear from our community. We welcome your comments, which are very important to us. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, Mr. President, there's no one signed up to speak.
With no one signed up to speak, I will open the general public hearing and close the general public hearing at six twenty-one P M. Agenda item number six, ordinance number twenty twenty-nine, and ordinance amending the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and to provide an effective date. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Mr. President, as we discussed at the work session, ordinance twenty twenty-nine is our first amendment to the F Y twenty twenty-five operating budget and C I P. There are no proposed changes at this time to the operating, general operating budget. And since we had the work session, we have an adjustment to the capital improvement program adjustment, and that is to add forty-five thousand dollars to the Virginia Manor Court project and taking that, those funds from the emergency infrastructure repair project. There were engineering invoices that had yet to be received from the engineers. It just didn't fall within their billing cycle that we included those. We have some processes to work on so that we count those ahead more in advance. The budget was, the original budget was pretty tight as far as the bids that came in. So I apologize for, for that error and would request that you suspend the rules this evening in order to award the contract for Virginia Manor Court. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I will open the general public hearing on ordinance number twenty twenty-nine at six twenty-three P M. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item?
No, sir.
With no one signed up to speak, I will close general public hearing at six twenty-four P M. This item was heard at the last week's council work session. Are there any additional comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. President, I do have a question about Virginia Manor Court.
Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
Director Saylor, I just wanted to know about the, I actually rode on that street yesterday, actually, and I only saw like, if, it wasn't even really a pothole, really, and, you know, the rest of the mat looked fairly fine, you know, I just, you know, just wondering, you know, is that, it's not, it's just the court, correct, and not, not Virginia Manor Drive?
I believe she said that's correct, Mr. Mills, but again, this is for the ordinance, the budget.
Sorry, Mr. Cole. Yes, Mr. Mills, I would, I would defer to Mr. Miller during that agenda item. Definitely, engineering is not, not in my.
Right, yeah, that's, that's, all right, I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions on the ordinance?
I just want to answer Councilman Mills' question. It, it is only the court and not the drive that is going to be repaired.
So is it, is it, is it going to be, thank you for answering, is it going to be the whole street or just at the tip of the street at the court and drive is, is just a little rough right there, like?
It's, it's going to begin at the stop sign and go full length of the court.
Okay, like.
Those projects, I will add, the projects that come before you are based on those non-destructive pavement evaluations. So it, it may be something that can't be seen on the surface as to why the engineers would recommend that the street be reconstructed.
Do we have a timeframe as far as when the last time it was, it was laid?
I don't know an exact answer for that, but I've been here eighteen years, and I have never seen that roadway paved.
And I also add that the project does include the repair of the concrete sidewalk, the pedestrian ramp, the concrete curbing, in addition to just the milling of the street.
Okay.
Thank you, Deputy Barr.
Thank you.
I will call everybody back to order that this is for ordinance number twenty twenty-nine. This isn't for the project itself. Is there any, is there a motion to suspend the rules on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for this ordinance.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I will now entertain a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-nine.
Mr. President, I motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-nine.
And do I have a second?
Seconded.
Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Sidmore?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, bid recommendation for Fourth and Fifth Street roadway improvements. Department of Public Works, Tommy Helms, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sidmore, Council President, and Laurel City Council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for construction project L A twenty-four zero zero four, Fourth and Fifth Street Improvements. This project includes the milling and overlay.
This project includes the milling and overlay, repair of concrete sidewalk, pedestrian ramps, concrete curbing, striping and roadway signage of Fourth Street from Main Street to Montgomery Street and Fifth Street from Main Street to Gorman Avenue. At a sealed bid opening at ten A M. On July thirty first, two thousand twenty four, the city received a total of six bids for this project. The bids received ranging from lowest to highest are as follows, as were read aloud. E N R Services, one hundred ninety one thousand, two hundred sixty nine dollars and twenty five cents. Ross Contracting, two hundred and twenty six thousand, two hundred twenty four dollars. Espina Paving, two hundred and thirty seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty five dollars and twenty five cents. American Asphalt Paving Company, two hundred and forty one thousand, eight hundred and sixty eight dollars and seventy five cents. E C M Corp, two hundred eighty one thousand, one hundred and five dollars. Vino Construction LLC, three hundred and seventy one thousand, seven hundred eighty six dollars and fifty nine cents. Funding for this project is provided in the adopted F Y twenty five C I P Fourth Street Improvement Project and Fifth Street Improvement Project. It is recommended that the contract for this bid be awarded to E N R Services Incorporated. A minority business enterprise, disadvantaged business enterprise and small business enterprise from Land O' Maryland for their bid of one hundred and ninety one thousand, two hundred sixty nine dollars and twenty five cents, with an additional contingency of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and seventy five cents, for a total of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. E N R Services Inc. has previously completed projects for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. I will open the floor to council members. Council members, are there any additional comments or questions since the work session? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the bid recommendation.
Mr. President, I motion that we approve the bid recommendation for the Fourth and Fifth Street improvements.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda item number eight, bid recommendation for Compton Avenue Alley Improvements. Again, Department of Public Works, Tommy Helms, you have the floor.
Thank you. The uh the Department of Public Works is requesting approval for construction project L A twenty five zero zero one, Compton Alley Street Improvements. The project includes the construction of new concrete aprons, sidewalks, curving, eight inches and twelve inches thick reinforced concrete alley, ten foot wide with a portion being of stamped concrete. The work will take place between Compton Avenue and Talbot Avenue, running in the rear of six hundred to six hundred and eight of Fourth Street. At a sealed bid opening at ten A M. On August first, two thousand twenty four, the city received a total of six bids for this project. The bids received ranging from lowest to highest are as follows as were read aloud. S F M S LLC, seventy two thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and seventy five cents. E N R Services, seventy seven thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Allney Mason Air Court, ninety two thousand, four hundred four hundred forty five uh dollars. Espina Paving, one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred ninety six dollars and twenty five cents. I N L Construction LLC, one hundred forty nine thousand, eighty four dollars. Patton Construction Company, one hundred and seventy five thousand, eight hundred and seventy eight dollars. Funding for this project is provided for in the adopted F Y twenty five C I P Compton Alley Improvement Project.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. Again, this was heard at the work session held last week. Are there any additional comments or questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I motion that we approve the Compton Alley Improvement Project.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Can I please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman uh Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda item number nine, bid recommendation for Virginia Manor Court Street Improvements. Tommy Helms of Public Works, you have the floor.
Thank you. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for construction project L A twenty four zero zero five, Virginia Manor Court Street Improvements. This project includes the milling and overlay, placement of a geotextile fabric, repair of concrete sidewalk, pedestrian ramps, concrete curbing and striping for Virginia Manor Court. At a sealed bid opening at ten A M. On July thirty first, twenty twenty four, the city received a total of six bids for this project. The bids received ranging from lowest to highest are as follows as were read aloud. E N R Services, one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred sixty seven dollars and fifty cents. S F M S LLC, one hundred and twenty one thousand, eight hundred and forty five dollars. American Asphalt Paving Company, one hundred and thirty two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and twenty five cents. Espina Paving, one hundred and forty five thousand, five hundred eighty five dollars. Ross Contracting Incorporated, one hundred fifty one thousand, forty five dollars. E C M Corp, one hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty five dollars. Funding for this project is provided in the amended F Y twenty five C I P Virginia Manor Court Street Improvement Project.
Thank you, Mr. Helms. I believe there may be some questions on this one. I'll open the floor to council. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid recommendation.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the bid recommendation for E N R Services for the Virginia Manor Court Street Improvements.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Uh President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda item number ten, purchase recruit, purchase requisition for Ray Rig Vision Service Verification Hardware and Software. Environmental Programs Manager, Michelle Blair, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Cole, Council and Mayor Sidnor. As introduced in the work session on September fourth, the four years the recommendation for a sole source one time purchase of the Ray Rig Pacific Vision Service Verification Hardware and accompanying software. This purchase will allow Public Works and the Sustainability Office to verify curbside collections, manage the city's assets of collection carts and provide efficient and effective educational outreach to residents, enabling them to successfully use all the collection systems, uh refuse, recycling and composting that the city offers curbside to our residents. Approval is requested for the sole source purchase from Ray Rig Pacific in the amount of ninety nine thousand, three hundred dollars for the R F I D readers and cameras for eight trucks and the one year software subscription in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars for a total cost of one hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. This hardware and software will integrate with the existing Ray Rig Pacific inventory software currently available to the city. Funding is provided in the um approved F Y twenty five, the in the adopted F Y twenty five C I P Environmental Programs Project.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Are there any questions on the bid recommendation? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'm I'm moved to uh motion to approve.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Seconding.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Mills?
As the compost ambassador, yes.
Hi, Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda item number eleven, our final bid recommendation for the evening for the backup generator replacement project phase one. Department of Community Resources and Emergency Management, Director Cornwall, you have the floor.
Thank you, President. Um good evening, Mr. President, Mayor and Council Members. Uh before you, as a memo dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty four, recommending your approval of a subward agreement between the City of Laurel and the Maryland Department of Emergency Management regarding a reimbursable hazard mitigation grant for emergency backup generators. This project will consist of replacing aging diesel power generators with high um state of the art natural gas power generators at five of our critical facilities, which are the municipal center, the police department, public works, our maintenance center for parking wrecks and the armory. This project will be completed in two phases. Phase one consisting of electrical assessment and coordination with B G and A on any required gas service upgrades. Phase two is slated for the construction and installation of the generators. The Federal Emergency Management Agency has approved phase one of the project at two hundred and forty five thousand, three hundred and ninety nine dollars and twenty five cents. This grant is a ninety percent match for federal at two hundred and seventy one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and seventy five cents and then ten percent of the city's cost at twenty five thousand, eight hundred thirty one dollars and fifty cents. Funding for phase one has been approved in the F Y twenty five C I P. Um that's all I have for tonight. I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, just one comment and uh I it's just what we talked about last work session, so I just wanna encourage in our talk with B G to try to get there in the state's outlook on the national gas infrastructure. Be sure it's gonna do what we want it to do. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir. We definitely will talk to B G N E as we go through this process and um look for possibly what their recommendations would be as we go through it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the council?
Just one other question. Uh is there, is there, the way that's structured as far as finding that grant, I mean, that's so brilliant. Uh we maybe if we can try to adopt that to go to other like departments and so forth, you know, um as far as the grants. But that that's that's brilliant. I really, I really like that. I really like that. Thank you, Director.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I motion that we approve the subward agreement for hazardous mi- for the hazardous mitigation grant um for the emergency backup generators.
A second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion in a second. Can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our last agenda item of the evening, appointment of Mr. Monte Burrow, Director to Department of Economic and Community Development. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. Um as you know, part of the mayor's job is to make sure the city is safe and oversee the city and appoint and adopt us all the departments with a confirmation at the city council. All the directors that are appointed, I'm capable, they can do the job. That's why I appointed him. And I'm pointing Mr. Burrows, I'm capable, he can do the job as well. But I wanna give you some background on Mr. Burrows. Mr. Burrows have over fifteen years experience working in planning economic development, eight years of experience here working inside the city of Laurel. So I'm gonna give you some more background, Mr. Burrows, because I know there was some feedback um from one community member. I I received an email from one concerned citizen and I received another feedback from one community member um telling me not to appoint Mr. Burrows. And uh I'm gonna go with the procedure of how this process plays. Mr. Burrows uh was acting director, became acting director when Mr. Love left. As April, Mr. Burrows been serving as acting director of the back there Economic Development Department. And how that process work, um Mr. Burrows was acting for about thirty some days, more than thirty some days. But before I opened up that um application for interviews, I gave Mr. Burrow opportunity and I said, let me see what's going on. And so we had seventeen applicants apply, excuse me, eighteen applicants apply. And the ratio that we use here, we disqualified unqualified individuals that that don't make the interview. Corner Human Resource Office, we interviewed three to five, per ratio is three to five for open position. Um so four candidates was interviewed and the top three were sent to me. I interviewed those interviews one on one for about an hour. All three of those individuals was definitely qualified. Mr. Burrows is one of those individuals. Uh there are other little things that take in place. As a the mayor, I see different uh other things. I say, hey, you know what? What's more important to me? Someone's been dependable, someone's been here, someone who I know I can depend on. And so I look at those things in consideration. But I also looked at Mr. Burrows' history since he's been working here in the city of Laurel. I just wanna go back to two thousand sixteen, when Mr. Burrows first came to the city. And his evaluation was, at that time, his director, the rating officer, was uh our current city administrator, Miss Pulli. And some of the comments that Miss Pulli said about Mr. Burrows, said, Mr. Burrows have been working in municipal government for several years. His prior experience helped make smooth transition to the city of Laurel policy and procedures. An effort to assist his professional development, she recommend um Toastmaster. And then in two thousand eighteen, Mr. Burrows continued to have a smooth transition of absorbing the city of Laurel codes, policies and principles. He never hesitate to follow up on zoning complaints or violations that may occur. However, Mr. Burrows has little experience with zoning application and staff reporting process at his previous jobs. The lack of experience has caused him to work a slower pace on zoning app- application tasks. Once Mr. Burrows has the opportunity to review more applications on a regular basis, the process should become a breeze. I recommend Mr. Burrows join Toastmaster again with more comfortable with public speaking. That was two thousand eighteen. Raider, um Kristen Pulli. Two thousand nineteen. Mr. Burrows has a thorough knowledge, excuse me. I'm I'm got out of oh out of order. One second, stand with me. Okay, two thousand nineteen, we go, um this rate is Robert Love. Mr. Burrows has an extensive knowledge of city codes, policy, procedures, permit and review process. Mr. Burrow does an excellent job working with the citizens on zoning questions and concerns, bringing forth enthusiasm that the public enjoy. Mr. Burrows continues to assist with zoning complaint and violation that may occur within the city. Mr. Burrows currently drafts Historical District Commission reports, technical staff reports and planning commission and other zoning letters. Mr. Burrow continued to improve in his writing skills on these reports, gaining consistency with each that is written. Mr. Burrows appear to be more comfortable with the duties and tasks of this position. That's Mr. uh Love's supervisor there. Two thousand twenty, Robert Love. Mr. Burrows does an excellent job working with citizens on zoning questions and concerns, bringing forth enthusiasm that the public enjoy. Mr. Burrows, uh excuse me, Mr. Burrows approve, have proved, um provide guidance on department new planners, training new planners as they come inside the department. Two thousand twenty one. Mr. Burrows have been very reliable planner for several years. He has greatly improved upon his writing skills and regarding his reports. Rarely there are any errors. He often goes above his duty for his applicants and work in presentation of the application before the planning commission, H T C and the board of appeals. Mr. Burrows at times could improve upon details needed on day to day tasks. He's been able to challenge, he's been, he's been able to handle the challenges of the COVID placing upon the working environment success. Mr. Burrows was tasked with difficult tasks simplifying six six um fine ordinance when he accomplished. I look forward to working with Mr. Burrows on his leadership when he rolls in his department. Two thousand twenty two. Mr. Burrows continued to produce quality work, report presentations, his writing skills continued to improve on various staff reports, orders and uh and violation notice. Mr. Burrows. I expect Mr. Burrows continue growing and advancing his career in the city of Laurel level. Mr. Burrows in two thousand twenty three. Mr. Burrows promoted to position as deputy director of E C D. His hard work and dedication made him an obvious choice for this new position. Mr. Burrows has shown tremendous leadership. He has taken responsibility as head staff, liaison of the Historic District Commission and supervises the city planners. Mr. Burrows has been a source of positive energy praising the team. He continued to be a leader. Two thousand twenty four, um Mr. Love, his last evaluation. Mr. Burrows continued to grow in his position. Two thousand twenty-four, um Mister Love, his last evaluation. Mister Burrows continued to grow in his position. She remain a fierce and loyal advocate for the work taking place. With employees of ECD. In the upcoming years, I look forward to Mister Burrows taking more responsibility, including a larger planning project, working on the city master plan. Research and zoning requests and training and planning staff. I believe Mister Burrows will will meet these expectations. I talked to Mister Love again this morning, um prior to um this morning, Mister Burrows. Mister Love said the same thing in those reports he said. I think Mister Burrows is definitely qualified, he has education, he has experience. Uh as the mayor, that's someone I can trust, someone I can depend on. And those are some of the things I looked at when I was evaluating other applicants as well. So I recommend, I ask the council to nominate Mister Burrows to be our ECD director. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll open the floor to a motion to appoint Mister Burrows to Director of Department of Economic and Community Development.
I nominate Mister Burrows for director.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman, uh Councilman Mills?
Madam Clerk, be- before I give my vote, can I uh? I just wanted to make a statement.
Mister Mills, we can't make statements for in the middle of a vote. Statements can only be-
I haven't, I haven't made the vote yet.
But they can only be made before or after a motion is made. So once the motion is called, we need to continue with the vote.
Okay.
So I vote yes then.
Uh Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Abstention.
President Cole?
I'll abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, Mister Mills, you can make a motion or make a comment.
Okay, thank you, Mister President. Sorry about that, for the confusion there. So, uh. Today, the mayor and city council has received a letter from a concerned citizen. This citizen has stated that they had multiple interactions with Mister Burrows, which makes him outgoing. Motivated and a communicator. But concerned citizen says that he would not be good for the city. I remember the former mayor had saying, had these same same words about myself. And look at me today, saving the taxpayers thousands of dollars. The concerned citizen says that. Uh they observed Mister Burrows in meetings and says that he doesn't pay, he doesn't follow procedures. Has no uh no understanding of concept of historic district, of the historic district. And does not show respect for citizens. I have to beg to differ because he has the respect of holding the acting director's position. In which he was a protege of Director Robert Love. And he was given this position by our mayor today. What this letter had made me do was. Do some research of Mister Burrows over fifteen years of economic development, planning and zoning. Unified Land Development Code, Arts and Entertainment District, pending zoning applications. Community the redevelopment authority, commercial corridor program, historic district commission. Property and zoning locator, zoning verification letters, affordable housing programs. Business and property development programs, economic and community development, social media and the master plan. This is an excessive and an excessive amount of knowledge. And to try to belittle the almost decade that this man has been working for the city speaks volumes. Of working for two mayors. City administrator and constituents of the city of Laurel. We have hit a restart button in the city of Laurel. And I passionately suggest concerned citizens do the same. Look at the thriving city that we have today. What department do you think that came from? Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Mister Mills. Mister Mayor, would you like to make a comment or Mister Burrows?
I wanna um thank uh the city council for a confirmation. I really appreciate that. Mister Burrows, like I said, would be addition to our staff, a hard-working gentleman, a lot of trust and a lot of faith in him. Um. She would not be disappointed. And so Mister Burrows, uh um you can say a few words to the council if you like.
Go ahead, Mister Burrows.
I'd just like to thank. I don't take this lightly. I appreciate your votes. And I'm definitely looking forward to working with you on the professional level. So I thank you for your confidence and I thank you, Mister Mills. Mister Sidnor, Miss Kristin, Miss Clark, all of you who voted for me. I don't take this lightly. I learned from a great man who passed it on to me, so I'm gonna do my best. And I thank you for your voter confidence, these not tears of sadness, these are tears of joy. I just wanna let everybody know that the mayor didn't make a mistake. And I'm looking forward to working in a greater capacity and working a greater for this city. And I do see uh along with the ECD team taking this department to a greater level, so I thank you again.
Thank you, Director. With no further business before the mayor and city council, tonight's meeting is adjourned.